Good evening. And welcome to the Zoni Board of Appeals September 29, 2022 meeting. There were four of us here: Lorraine Brew, Kim Melon, Dave Brown, and Barney Overe, and of course, our administrative assistant Diana Gray. Kurt is -- we saw him before, Kurt is Zooming. Is he there? Kurt, are you there?
I am here, yes, thank you.
You can hear us, okay. So the first order of business are the minutes from our August 25 meeting. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
No.
Okay. I'm gonna have to do this by a roll call vote, so I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Dave?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Second, probably around 5:30 this evening, I sent to everybody on the board a copy of the summary of the town's conflict of interest rules. And we're required to acknowledge receipt of that. We don't have to take any ethics tests this year, but we're just required to acknowledge receipt of it. I think the four of us have already signed it. So Kurt, I'm gonna have -- I'll ask Diana to send you a copy of that tomorrow to sign. And if you would just sign it and get it back to her, that would be appreciated.
I will take care of it tomorrow.
Great, thank you. So we have to wait until 7:05. Are you from Philadelphia Sign Company? No, you are. Okay, we have to wait to 7:05, because this is a public hearing, but once we hit that point, it's showtime for you.
Very good.
Anything else that we need to cover administratively?
No, I don't believe so.
Do we have anything else for next month yet?
Not so far.
And tomorrow's a deadline, correct?
Are we back to our regular meeting schedule next month?
Yep.
I think so, right. So that would be one, two, three. Yeah, so tomorrow would be the deadline.
Okay.
I haven't gotten anything.
Nobody showing any interest or anything?
Nope.
Okay. All right, good, maybe we'll be lucky.
So it's October 20th?
That is. One, two, three, October 20th, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You don't think we'll be having any extra meetings, Barney?
I did reserve November 3rd, I believe.
Yeah, I don't think we'll --
An off-meeting night.
At this point, I don't think we'll need it, but...
I put it as a definite maybe.
Yeah, keep it as a possibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, one -- well, we'll talk about it later, but one thing I want to do as far as the 40B, next meeting, is to assess where we are, what we
Perfect.
don't have, what we need.
Yes.
What else we should be looking for, et cetera.
Yes, okay.
Next meeting.
And the clock on the wall is fixed, so it's right now, that one.
Oh, I was going by my watch.
Well, you could do that, too, but we fixed that one the other day.
So just finish the story about my friend.
Nope, I'm gonna get ready to go. Okay, the time being 7:05 PM. We have the request of Philadelphia Sign Company for special sign permits pursuant to the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 213 Signs, to allow, one, wall signs on a building that will exceed the number permitted, and, two, a monument sign that will exceed pertinent dimensional requirements and will replace an existing monument sign, the building in which such signs are to be installed, is situated at 4 Coquasset Street, Foxborough, in Sign District 3. Good evening, and you are?
I am Pierre Gelinas of Worcester, Massachusetts, representing Philadelphia Sign Company.
Again, your first name?
Pierre.
It's a G-E-L-I-N-A-S?
That's correct.
Good. Go ahead.
So we are proposing to add a ground sign at this location. Citizens Bank is relocating from the Stop &amp; Shop in the area to this new property at 4 Coquasset Street, and as such, is requesting some new signage along with the move-in. We're requesting a routed and push-through monument sign that is 24.59 square feet. A copy-only illuminates on it. And we are also requesting a window cabinet sign in the transom window above the front We understand that that sign is allowed by right. And on the backside of the building at the parking lot, we are also requesting another wall sign, which is a 12-inch-high letter set, which is halo-illuminated, so the face is opaque, and the lights shine against the brick wall to illuminate the outside of the letters. Also, there is a non-illuminated 24-inch-high logo up on the chimney of the building. Both of these, we understand, require a special permit. And the monument sign requires a special permit due to its setback.
So how far is it gonna be setback?
It will be setback three feet from the property line, because it is pretty tight in that area.
And that's gonna be next to the entranceway to the building, correct?
Correct, front entryway.
So it'll be facing Coquasset Street?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And the current Toddson sign that's on Mechanic Street, that's coming down?
That is coming down, it's being replaced by a directional sign that is six square feet.
Okay. So again, let me go back to the wall sign in the back of the building. And if you could, we obviously have the materials that you submitted. Could you just show us specifically which that sign is? Do you have a...
On the back of the building, we have a wall sign that's on the left side of the rear entrance. And then we have a second one that is just a logo only, no letters, that is up near the top of the chimney.
Okay, so the chimney would just be the logo?
Correct.
And the wall sign would be, again, the logo and citizens?
That's right.
Correct. And how, what's the square footage of that, again?
Square footage of the logo is four square feet. It's two feet by two feet. And the letter set over to the left has a total of 15.3 square feet.
So that will be the logo and the citizens?
That is the logo and the citizens, if you draw a rectangle around the outer extremities.
Mm-hmm. Okay, any other questions for anybody here?
No. And all the awnings are gonna have citizens logo on them?
They call it a crop daisy. It's like the chimney-mounted logo that we're proposing, but it is, it's not the full logo, it's cropped out on the lower right side.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
It's also a very subdued color as well.
So let me go back to the monument sign. It'll say citizens and have a logo imagined on both sides, correct?
That's right, yeah.
And it's not gonna be illuminated?
The letters themselves will be illuminated. It's routed and pushed through, which means that sign itself is opaque, but the space for the letters is routed out, and then they are pushed through from the backside. They're acrylic, which will illuminate.
So the illumination is what, from the inside?
It is from the inside, but the green field does not light up.
Okay. And the logos, and the logo with the citizens, is that illuminated?
The logo on the back left side of the rear door, that does light with indirect lighting. The lights are mounted behind the face of the letters, and they shine back towards the building, so it creates a halo effect of light. The logo up at the top does not light.
Okay. So I'm not sure I understand what you mean by the halo. Is it essentially illuminated from the inside, again?
The lights are on the inside, but they don't direct out towards the public view as a normal illuminated sign does, they actually direct back towards the brick.
These lights will be on 24/7?
They would be on for business hours.
Just the business hours?
That's correct. I personally do not
They would be off now, probably.
I do not know what those hours are at this present moment, but it is possible that they would be on if there's ATM access at all times.
Right now, there's no...
Because you're not sure.
I don't know, I don't control the hours.
Or it will be lit up, okay.
And there's no ATM now, but I suspect that's gonna change, I would think.
Diane, do they have to go through Design Review Board or Site Plan?
They were originally gonna paint the brick, and they were gonna have to, but since they're not going to, I don't think they do.
Okay, what about Site Plan with the planning board?
I don't believe so, because they're not making any changes to the exterior of the building.
Okay.
For, you know, the traffic, the driveway, everything's staying the same.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Scott's supposed to be on Zoom, you could ask him.
I'm sorry?
Scott is supposed to be on Zoom, you could ask him.
Yeah, Scott, are you there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair, and Diana is correct. Right now, I do not believe it needs to go to Design Review Board. And as for the ATM, there is no ATM. And Site Plan is not required, because there's no changes to the site. It's just aesthetic to the
Okay.
to the signs and stuff like that. There's no site improvements or anything like that.
Okay. Do you have any specific questions for Mr. Gelinas?
Not at this time.
Okay. Kurt, I don't wanna forget you, any questions that you may have?
Not at this time, Barney, no.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, any other questions? Does anybody in the public wish to be heard? Okay, we have a motion to close the public portion.
I move we close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I mean, I have no problems with what they wanna do, we just need to, I think, from my perspective, discuss, you know, conditions.
Well, I'm not too excited about it. And here's, you know, here's part of my thinking. This is gonna be, I believe, the fifth bank in the general area of the common.
Mm-hmm.
And if we do one for one, we'll be asked to do them for all, variances and whatnot. What's there now in these other banks are there as a matter of right, so, but, so I don't get too excited about it. And it's not like we're saying you can't have any signs, we're saying you can't have extra signs.
Mm-hmm.
So that's my feeling.
I am with you. Dave, I took a little bit of a walk and a drive around today, and for instance, Bank of America across the way has a wall sign that faces the Rotary. It has a free standing sign on the back on Market Street, so away from, away from the Rotary. And then it has, it doesn't even have anything in the back, their back-facing parking lot, you know, on the building. On the side of the driveways you enter in, it does have a wall sign. So outside of, you know, sort of parking signs, I counted three. And also Rockland Trust, which is directly across the street, has, if I counted correctly, it had seven. So what we're talking about here is, what is the total that you're asking for?
Total for signage that we're asking for is four.
Including, well...
Is that including directionals?
Including, let's say, identifies citizens on it. Does it identify citizens on that one?
The directional does not have a logo on it.
It doesn't, okay. But also, I guess in my mind, looking at the awnings, they have a logo on it. So in my mind, we could, I think that's something maybe we could talk about as well. It seems like a lot of signage slash awnings
Yeah.
compared to the other two banks that are right around the common. And that's not even going, I think we can go, this sign, District 3, can go, is it 1,000 feet away from, you know, I haven't even, didn't even look there. I also took a look at Bay Colony Group, which is in sort of a similar situation in that it's sort of on a corner where Citizens is as well. They have nothing on Mechanics, on the Mechanic Street side, no, I'm sorry, nothing on the South Street side, but they do have two wall signs, and then something very small on their door. So there's a lot less signage on things that directly about the Rotary, right around the common, so I'm with you, Dave.
So Kurt, any comments?
Nothing that, you know, Kim hasn't already stated. I did take a drive around the Rotary today, try to get an idea of what is the, you know, what else is there, and, you know, I share her opinions on those things as well, but those are the only comments that I have.
Uh, Lorraine?
I agree with the fact that there is a lot of signage, especially with the logo on all the awnings.
So I'm probably in the minority here, but...
I would say that through the history of working with citizens over a number of years, if we do have to give something back, they would not have a problem giving back the logos on the awnings. We've done that at multiple locations if necessary.
Yeah, the logos on the awnings are beyond our control, that's under Scott's jurisdiction, so. But perhaps that's something for him to bear in mind. So they're looking for, from us, for three signs. Are you opposed to all three, or?
Well, one of the three is, I think, replaces something, right? For my missing...
Well, not really replacing. What they're doing is taking out the current Toddson sign, a mechanic.
Mm-hmm.
So there's one monument sign that's being eliminated, and then they wanna put a monument sign basically at the walkway.
Sort of move-in one.
Essentially move-in one, yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I could interject for a sec?
Yep.
Okay. Just to give everybody a heads-up on the wall and awning signs, the maximum area for that district is 20% of wall area, or 200 square feet, whichever is greater, I mean, whichever is less, and a maximum one per building entrance.
So essentially, we've got one monument and two, two wall.
So they're gonna move the monument, I'm fine with that. But I'm not in favor of additional ones.
Of the two wall.
Of the two wall.
Okay.
I agree with you on the monument. And, I mean, I guess I'm not sure the benefit of having two wall signs on the back.
So I don't necessarily agree, but it only requires a majority vote on this, so if somebody wants to make a motion, we can go from there.
I move that, I don't know how to say this, that we approve the request in the, to the extent that they'll move the one monument sign. Is that a good way to put it? I mean, that's, or we can just move that I deny it, whichever works better.
You shouldn't wanna put the motion in a positive?
Yeah.
So if you did
Approve the one
Move that you approve request E01 sign.
Could you use your microphones? I can't hear anything.
So I'll speak, I'll speak louder, these aren't...
They're not for the room.
They're not for the room.
Speak, please.
So, yes, I will.
Thank you.
So...
Like I'm speaking.
Joan, please, we're done with the public portion of the hearing, so just relax.
So motion would be to approve the request for monument labeled E, monument sign labeled E01?
Mm-hmm. Maybe we should do two motions, then, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we got a second, right?
Yeah. Well, actually, the motion should come from
Yeah.
one of you.
So I'll also move what Ms. Brew has indicated to be
To approve the request regarding the monument sign.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? And opposed? The second motion would be to approve the two wall signs?
Right, N4 and N10.
Would the board approve one extra wall sign?
Well, specifically, what do you mean?
Instead of both on the back elevation, if we eliminated one?
No, I'm not in favor of that.
I guess I'd need to know specifically what you're asking.
We would remove the chimney-mounted sign if the board would agree with that.
So yours, what you're proposing is on the backside, that we would just, you're suggesting just keep N04?
Correct.
Which has the daisy and the word citizens.
Right, and the only reason I'm really pushing for that is, it's just ease of visibility of the branch. If you're coming from that street, you'll have no visibility of, that there's a bank there, other than the small directional sign, which isn't branded.
That makes sense to me.
All right, I'll agree to that.
Okay.
Okay.
So why don't we do this, why don't we, you're requesting that we no longer consider the chimney sign?
I am requesting that we no longer consider the N10 chimney sign, correct?
Okay, so we're just dealing with N4, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So somebody wanna make a motion?
So move to approve sign N4.
All in favor? And opposed? So sometime in the next couple of weeks, we'll write up and sign a decision. It'll be filed with the town clerk. Diana, we'll send a copy to you. And there's an appeal period, a 20-day appeal period. Once that period is run, assuming there's no, no appeal, then speak with Mr. Shippey, okay?
Very good.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Before we begin, Paul, it was very difficult to hear the people who had
Spent it all way out.
Okay, thank you. You need a copy of the next one?
I'll take that one. Got it.
Okay, the time being 7:10 PM, we have the request of Joseph Carmen seeking a special permit under Section 5.4.2 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, to allow an increase in the non-conforming nature of the existing single-family home with a construction of an attached two-car garage with a proposed rear setback that is greater than the existing single-family home rear setback, but does not meet the required rear line setback. Property is located at 40 Pleasant Street, Foxborough, in the R15 Residential and Agricultural District. It is not located in any restrictive overlay district. Mr. Carmen?
Jennifer Carmen, his wife and stepdaughter.
Thank you. Talk to us, tell us what you got in mind.
I'm Joseph Nort, I'm the general contractor, and
I'm sorry, who are you?
Joseph Nort, N-O-R-T-E. And we're the General Contractors Premier at Construction. And I brought maybe too many plans, if you wanted to see, I've got full-size plans of the existing, what was proposed, and if you wanted to take a look at it, in the package, you have them already.
So what we have is the architectural plans and the plot plan.
A site plan, okay, yeah.
Okay.
And the house now, the existing is 17 feet setback. The setback from the front and the other side lines are within the guidelines, and it's just, they'd like to build, it's a breezeway addition with a two-car garage and a room above. And building the, the addition doesn't make it less non-conforming, because it's non-conforming and accepted now.
The deck that's out back is what, about 7.6 feet?
Right.
From this? So, and the foundation of the house, I think you said, is 17.2?
Right.
So when you do the breezeway in the garage, that entire, well, the entire stretch of the garage would be what, 17.5, is that it?
Well, the back of the garage is gonna be 17.5. It's greater than where the house is now, it's 17.2.
So that's just inches, right? Just several inches, really, difference, 17.2, 17.5.
Well, we just wanted to move it
Yeah, no, I'm
Further within the back line, yeah.
Saying that it's a very small amount of
Yeah, well, the engineer, he said, well, we can go with a 17.2, we said, you know, let's not, let's go with a 17.5, just to give a little bit of fluff.
So you're not actually increasing or intensifying the non-conformity at all?
No.
Even though we're talking just inches? So above the garage, that entire space above the garage, now you have it referenced as a bonus room and bathroom?
Right.
So what are the, that'll be habitable space, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. What is a bonus room? What particularly are you?
Really, we're just looking for a second living room, extra space for our two boys that are outgrowing the house that we already have.
Mm-hmm.
Giving yourself some room.
That would be it.
And how is that access to the, by stairway to the major part of the house?
Correct. So there's a stairway up to the second floor. Now, it would go to the left to the original house, and right above the garage.
Mm-hmm. Any questions? Go ahead.
So it'd be an interior crossover, is that what we're saying?
Correct. So the breezeway on the side, basically above that, there'll be a hallway, the bonus room behind that, and then what we would consider the living room.
Which is fine.
Did you wanna see the plans?
Sometimes people do these things, and you find out they got an internal stairway coming out of the garage, going up, you know, which...
Conveniently, the stairs are up against the sidewall, so it's just very easy to go out that way.
So currently, how many square feet is our house?
15
1,500, I believe?
1,548, I believe, or 1,584, according to the
Okay.
the assessors' records.
And how much additional living space would be added with their proposed addition?
If it's above the two-car garage, it'd be 625.
Yeah.
Okay. So we are, so what is our percentage there?
It's about 39, I believe.
39% increase, okay, thank you.
The fence in the back go the full length of your back?
It goes about 3/4 of the length right now. There's a parking lot immediately behind us for the condo. There's a small bit of wooded space there, and then they have basically a dumpster on that same line.
There's a small bit of wooded space there, and then they have basically a dumpster on that same line as the parking lot there.
Any other question? Kurt, any questions?
Not at this time, Barney, no.
Okay. Scott, any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, does anybody in the public wish to be heard? Okay, can we close the public portion?
I move we close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? So, when the, I guess the application came in, and then when the hearing notice was written, it was written relative to looking at this as an intensification of the existing nonconformity. Well, you're not intensifying it because the deck is 7.6 feet, and obviously, the foundation is 17.2, and you're actually, you know, less, so there's no intensification. But Section 5.4.2 talks about an increase in the nonconforming nature or an increase in the habitable floor area by 25% or more. When I first looked at this application, I said to the building commissioner, why are they before us? Because they're not increasing the intensity. And Scott pointed out to me, very correctly, that because you're building the room above the garage, which is 625 square feet, that's more than 25% of the, of that existing habitable floor area of the house. So, you're still under Section 5.4.2, but under the aspect of increasing habitable floor area by 25%. I have absolutely no problems with this. I do have three conditions, but absolutely, you know, no problems at all.
I agree.
Okay, so the conditions that I would have would be that the proposed addition consists of a 25-foot-by-25-foot two-car garage with habitable floor area of 625 square feet above, and a 12-foot-by-12-foot breezeway attached to the existing dwelling, as shown on the land and architectural plans. And what we would be doing is attaching both the plot of land, that plan and the architectural plans as exhibits to the decision. Number two, the location of the addition relative to the existing structure and property, as is shown on the land plan. And number three, that the addition would be constructed in accordance with the architectural plans with external materials to be comparable in type and color, as that of the existing dwelling. Anything else?
No.
No.
So, motion to approve with those conditions?
I move to approve with those three conditions.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so we're going to write up a decision within the next week or two. Diana will send you a copy of it. There's a 20-day appeal period. When that runs, you're going to need to file the decision in the registry of deeds, okay, up in Dedham. If you have any questions, either give Scott Shippey or Diana a call. After it's been filed, go back to Scott with a copy of the decision with the registration from the registry, you know, on it. And you're free to then apply for your building permit at that point.
Yeah, so we can't apply for the building permit until the decision is recorded?
Technically, no. If you want to take a chance and speak with Scott, you know, feel free to do so, but technically, no.
I think it's all electronic now.
As far as the plan?
I think you can start the process, submit all the insurance and all of that stuff online.
Another job just down the street over here, and that's what we do. We did everything online and dealt with Lisa.
Yeah, yeah, you can do it with Lisa, and then you just wait, you know, once you get the book and page with the decision, I think then they'll approve it. But you could start the process.
Yeah, because we've been waiting for so long to get this.
We'll have the decision written and hopefully signed by the middle of next week and the next week, so.
And I'll deal with Scott.
But again, you've got to make the filing, and there is that appeal period, so. Again, if you have any questions.
Okay.
Just speak with Scott.
Great, thank you.
And just so I make, I'm sure you're, it's N-O-R-T-E?
Yes.
And you're the general contractor?
Yes, Premier Construction is, and I'm Premier Construction.
Okay, good. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to take a break, right? Paul, we're going to take a five or seven-minute break. Thank you.
Thanks again.
You've public hearing 119 Moore Street Realty Trust requests a comprehensive permit under the local initiative program pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20-23, to construct 52 condominium residential units, 25% of which will be affordable to households earning not more than 80% of the area median income. The property is situated at 119 Moore Street in the general industrial district and is in a future aquifer area overlay district. We have, in addition to Lee, Barney Overett, Lorraine Brew, Kim Mellon, Dave Brown, who are present here at town hall, Kurt Yegian is zooming in, Paige Duncan is the town's Director of Land Use and Economic Development is zooming in, Scott Shippey, our building commissioner, is zooming in. I don't think that Judy Barrett is with us, or at least not yet. We also have from Environmental Partners Dylan O'Donnell and Molly Cody. Is there anybody that I missed? Don't believe so. Since the last hearing session, which was on August 25th, we have received a number of materials, and let me go through them. We received the truck turning plan from Bay Colony Group, Inc., which is dated September 6, 2022, a September 8, 2022 email from Deputy Fire Chief David Larissy, a September 9, 2022 letter from Bay Colony Group responding to comments received during the July and August hearing sessions, and to written comments from Environmental Partners, and in closing, a revised preliminary site plan and preliminary utility and stormwater report, a September 20, 2022 letter from Attorney Drew Hoyt, a September 20, 2022 letters from Environmental Partners concerning their second civil site review letter, their second transportation review letter, and their first environmental review letter, a September 22, 2022 letter from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to Carl and Karen Vandaboom, issuing a superseding order of resource area delineation, a September 25, 2022 email from Karen LeBlank, September 26, 2022 emails from Laura Marshall Smith, somebody who didn't tell us who he was, but his email address is bsquared@juno.com, from Sandra Cook, and from Barbara Pacini, September 27, 2022 emails from Donald Demoro, Mark Conley, and two from Lisa Pereira, September 22, 2022 emails from Tom and Valerie Garcia, from Maureen Serge, from Jessica Uth, from Anne Marie Anderson, and Sean McNamara, September 29, 2022 email from Lisa Duncan, and a September 29, 2022 letter to the board from Kathy and Carl Vandenboom. And Diane, I think you said you received two others late today?
Yeah, there were two. One was at, well, both around 6 o'clock, one from Kim McNamara, and one from Chris Booth. Chris and Allison Booth.
Now, all the ones that I read are on the website, correct?
Yeah, these last two were not.
Last two were not. They will be entered on the website?
I can do it tomorrow.
Okay. So I guess what I want would be a motion to enter all of them, including the two that Diane has received, into the record and to waive the reading.
I move that we enter all of the materials.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Now, in addition to that, we have received the consent from the applicant to extend the hearing to January 19, 2023. As recall, that was a request that I made at the last hearing session. So we're fortunate tonight to have both Deputy Chief David Larissy and DPW Director Chris Gallagher with us. We requested that because we probably do have some questions for each of you, and as I mentioned to Deputy Chief Larissy, anything that we don't cover that you want to cover, you know, please, you know, please bring it up. I don't know if you want to, what's the best way for you to be near a microphone? Actually, could, could...
Just a sit back for a...
Yeah, could, what, you guys sit back so they can...
Dub, Barney, you could put him over here.
Okay, actually, that'll be fine.
Uh, Dave and Chris, you want to come to over here?
So let me just start off with the first question that I had, the one that is sort of prominent in my mind. I know that the fire department wants the bridge that crosses over the Rumford River to be 20 feet wide.
Correct.
And obviously, it's going to have to be designed by a structural engineer and meet specifications as far as weight and things of that nature.
Yep.
Now, the road that leads to there from Moore Street, should that also be 20 feet wide?
I think the most recent plan from September 6 shows 20 feet, correct, Bill?
Correct.
So I think all the roadways currently are designed to be 20 feet, as well as the bridge. That's the newest plan that was submitted.
So the, the bridge does not have a walkway or anything for pedestrians going across at the same time?
That's correct, but the newest design that we just reviewed shows a four-foot walkway.
Okay, that's, I'm interested in where we're headed now, what we got, because what we got clearly isn't going to work.
Yeah.
When you, and you know, a lot of these questions come up because of the big ladder trucks that we have these days.
Exactly.
The ladder trucks, and I also, when I say trucks, I'm figuring that Mansfield very possibly could end up responding as well to a fire there.
That's correct.
Do they carry water onboard?
They don't on their tower unit, but the design that was submitted through Bay Colony was designed with Mansfield's tower unit as, because it's larger than ours. And at this, at the present time, it's heavier as well.
Yeah.
So the GVW of our heaviest vehicle is about 60,000 pounds.
Yeah.
The Mansfield is about 70,000 pounds, so it's quite a bit different. But as vehicles evolve, things get, we, you know, we, like, our ladder truck now carries water, so as we try to be more efficient and we were able to get more things on a vehicle, they are going to get heavier, so that was our request to make the bridge...
Yeah, so the water you're carrying and whatnot would add to the weight potentially?
That, the water, our water is included in our GVW now.
Okay.
But what we want, what we plan to do is plan for the future to, we know the next vehicle's going to be heavier, so we should anticipate that where we're in, you know, we're in that construction stage now.
Now, the road, the roadway is, I believe it's 20 feet within. Parking of cars on the roadway, is that, would that present a problem?
Yeah, I was going to address that tonight. I spoke with Paige earlier this week. Paige and I kind of touched on that. At this time right now, we're having, we're having issues in Summerfield, where we've been contacted, someone representing the HOA. What they have is no parking on one side. It's also a 20-foot roadway. It says temporary parking only on one side. They're looking for a definition of what's temporary. Some people are thinking it's days. Some, there is no, you know, you could, you could think it's two hours, I could think it's a day, so we were going to bring that up if we would have to, it would be suggested that there'd be a parking restriction to at least one side, and then it would be temporary, so somebody would have to come up, I don't know if it's yourselves or whatever, but what would be the definition of temporary? Because this, right now, we're not able to enforce the issue they're having down there. We're working on that. And, you know, the, the parking issue on turns would have to be no parking on both sides as well. Because a 20, 20-foot roadway with the radius with the truck, it would be, it would be a challenge. Because, I mean, we're also having to look at wintertime with snowbanks and stuff encroaching on the roadway, so.
I think, would the parking restriction be Board of Selectmen issue, since it's the road?
Well, that's going to be a private development, so it's going to be a homeowners association issue that, I mean, it's an hour issue and ultimately a homeowners association issue. And what we've done in the past with the 240B developments that are condominium developments or homeowner developments is to have town council review the homeowners association documents, so that's something we would cover one way or both ways.
Thank you. Well, I think we've talked about this, but would you prefer that traffic be one way around there, or?
I don't know if that would necessarily affect us at all.
Okay.
I don't, you know, I don't think that would affect us, actually. I think we'd be okay with, with both ways. You know, the 20 feet, I mean, we have, we believe Cannon Forge is 20 feet, we, you know, we tried to find those measurements in the subdivisions, so we just didn't have enough time to find that, but going down there, we believe that that's the same measurement, and that's a two-way traffic. And it was, when I did go down, there were a couple cars parked on the side of the road, and you do have to go around, actually, one of them was a mailman, but you have to go around, and it is tight, so I think that, you know, we'd, we'd really have to make that, you know, part of the condition, only parking on one side and temporary. Because it doesn't look like there's really many visitor parking spots or on there, so I think we'd have to really pay attention to that, to how the parking would be addressed, for gas or overflow.
The buildings are designed to be 12, in some cases, I think, Bill, you had said 10 feet apart. Does that present any, any issues, any concerns?
No, no, that doesn't. That's okay with us.
A sufficient number of fire hydrants in the development is proposed?
Yes, yeah, and then it, it's designed with a loop system as well.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think pressure's going to be an issue, or volume or anything like that, so I think all that stuff's pretty good. That was at the beginning, they kind of had that worked out, what their thoughts and ideas were on that, we were okay with that. The main thing with us was the bridge, the width of the, and the width of the roadway, and then, you know, being able to maintain the vehicles on the side of the roads there, so that was our big issues. So our recommendations would be to make sure that the bridge can hold a vehicle at least 80,000 pounds.
Which a structural engineer would recognize, we hope, when he's designing it.
Yeah, I would believe so.
Now, what about the canopy of the trees? I mean, I don't, I don't know how high these trucks are these days, but...
Yeah, I think, you know, in Orchard Place, we asked that, when, when we approved that, that Joe Lynch cut the, the trees up to 14 and a half feet and keep that maintained, you know, part of it.
Now, what place was this, which one?
Orchard Place, when we talked with Joe Lynch about that.
Continue.
The duplexes.
Oh, okay, I didn't do that one, okay, so...
Yeah. And that was just a single duplex, but it's just, we were just trying to get out front of it because it's, you know, our trucks are higher, and they're getting, you know, they are pretty high, the ladder trucks.
The truck turning plan is fine?
Yeah, yeah, it, we reviewed the, the turning plan, and it looks like there's enough, you know, the Mansfield truck is bigger than ours, so we feel that our truck would, would certainly be able to, to handle that, that route and that design that was put in place. And then our truck, our new ladder truck, which is why the truck will have the outriggers, you know, to throw the ladder up, we're, we're figuring we need 16 feet, that's going to require 16 feet once we place that somewhere, so the 20 feet would be sufficient for, for that roadway.
So once that truck is deployed, fully deployed, if there were additional trucks coming in, they just would come around the loop the other way?
Yeah.
If needed to get there?
Correct.
You're going to kill the roadway wherever that is.
Yeah, so, you know, we, the reason we're asking for it to be designed a little heavier is because Mansfield would be our first mutual aid down there if we did have structural fire that required help. So we have to anticipate, you know, the weight of their vehicle coming in. Obviously, there's only one vehicle at a time on the bridge, so that's not, that's not a concern, but it's just to know that we will have a heavier vehicle than our own present and on that roadway.
Something else that comes to my mind about...
And so I imagine snow removal will be very important, because you're going to need the 20 feet.
Yeah, yeah, because we have to maintain that 20 feet, it's, you know, it's, that's tight, you know, it's a tight roadway for, just because of all the turns and stuff, so that's a tight roadway.
Okay.
But we've been in Summerfield, we've never had an, that's, that's an HOA, and we've never had an issue with snow removal or having, you know, anything impede in the roadway with them, so it wouldn't be too critical.
No questions for Dave.
Kurt, any questions?
No questions, Barney.
Scott and Paige, any questions?
None from me, thank you.
None from me as well. I've been actually talking, talking with Deputy Larissy in depth on this, and I fully agree with his, his findings.
Okay, thank you. Of course, I want to ask you a question that sort of has nothing to do with development per se, but it's been an issue that residents have raised, both in our hearings and in right-of-way, and that's the fact there were no sidewalks on, on Moore Street. I know the town did a survey several months ago, I guess it was probably your department that did it. Any projection as far as sidewalks at any point in time on Moore Street?
To that extent, no. I mean, there's, there's nothing on the plan at this point, you know, where it really becomes, one, as far as the funding issue, you know, the sidewalks, per linear foot are just about as expensive as the 24, 26-foot roadway is to pave. So, you know, at this point, there's, there's nothing in the works to extend that sidewalk on Moore Street down to that extent, or to the mile of, of the school blocking district, unfortunately.
And of course, if we were to do it, eminent domain issues would come into play as well, I would imagine.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to work through the survey and find out what the layout, the width of, of Moore Street is, you know, to see where, where we could place it, if we could fit it within the, the right-of-way. Utility poles usually become the bigger problem after that, you know, they usually sit, you know, within two feet of the edge of road, so if you have a narrow roadway, you know, you're looking at pushing those back, or they're impeding every, you know, 100, 125, 50 feet, so.
And I assume there are no plans to, or current plans to widen Moore Street at all?
There are not.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from Mr. Gallagher? Two? Lorraine?
Yeah.
Kurt, any questions, any further questions?
Not right now, Barney, no.
Okay, Scott or Paige?
No, no questions now.
Looked from me as well.
So let me ask one question for both of you, or either of you, whoever wants to answer it. What, what else do you want to tell us that we haven't covered yet tonight, or, or that you think we should be aware of, that perhaps has not been raised so far?
I really don't have anything else to be aware of. I think the, I think the sidewalk on the bridge is huge, I mean, because the, the green space out front that would be used, so I think that's a, that's a good feature to have as far as not waiting for a category of a bridge, and, you know, because under our standards, that's not required, you know, that, that walkway would not be required, it's only the 20-foot road itself, so I think that's a pretty good feature. As far as fire protection, public safety, I think they've addressed all the requirements on, pretty much, I think that they've addressed everything that we've asked for, you know, it's been going on for months, so.
I think on my end, you know, we touched a little bit on it, talking about the hydrant locations and the fact that internally it's a loop system within the development. You know, we did have Environmental Partners look at the system, probably going back almost two years ago now, I guess, I guess a year, August 21, you know, to see if that line, six-inch line coming through the conservation property from the Morse to Spring Street easement was sufficient. You know, the first problem is it's only a six-inch line, so anything today's standard you connect a fire hydrant to needs to be an eight-inch main, so that's the first problem with the line existing in its location, current location. It also becomes a water quality issue, having a, a dead end that long, the water can get stagnant. We have, unfortunately, a lot more in, in the system than we would like. We have over 200 dead ends in the system currently within town. Anytime we can remove one is a benefit to, you know, not just that one particular roadway, but, you know, surrounding areas. So, you know, replacing the, the line that's going through the conservation property out to the easement, and then running the, a secondary line out to Moore Street to connect to the, the system out there, does significant, is a significant improvement for that end of town, redundancy, water quality, the pressure, you know, the pressure's high down there. You know, the model shows it's, you know, well above what is normal...
Dave Larissy is here.
60 to 65 PSIs. So, you know, pressure's not necessarily an issue, but it is a, a water quality and a redundancy issue, where if there's, is a problem on one piece of the system, we can close it off and still provide water through Moore Street or through the easement, so I think for that, that piece, it is important. And I did see, you know, the latest plans do show that the, that design through the conservation property does avoid the wetlands, you know, there was a small piece where the current main goes through the wetlands, so the design is showing that that's being removed from the wetland area, you know, and will be constructed. And one, something else that I'll say is that these easements really should have been maintained, you know, since that pipe was put in the ground, so if we ever had an issue with that main, we wouldn't be able to get it to it. So unfortunately, you know, putting in the main is going to result in cutting some trees down, clearing some of that property to do that work, similar to the path that is from Spring Street to Moore Street, where that water main is now, it'll be similar, similar in size to that.
Now, I understand that you're requiring that the sewage line, as it crosses the, the river, initially the design was to go below the river, but now you're going to require something to be above?
I think it's, it's still a question, you know, if, if it can be hung off of the bridge, you know, that's one of the best scenarios, because you can see it, you have access to it. If something goes wrong with it, you know, you're not having to dig, you know, under the river to access that. Bill and I were, were talking about it. Haven't quite figured out if that's the best-case scenario yet for the way that that sewer system's designed, so we're still working out those details.
Okay. And I've seen that kind of scenario, unfortunately, I've seen it, but I won't get into why it's unfortunate, in Grafton crossing the Blackstone River. There is an area where I can just see the, you know, the, the line going above, which I assume is, you know, as far as both water and perhaps, you know, septic, so...
Yeah, they go, they go both ways. You know, the water line down on, that crosses the bridge on 106, goes up and over the side. However, we're looking at on West Street, where we're redo, rebuilding the dam, that's going to be under that box culvert, the new culvert that's going there, so it goes both ways, so we haven't quite figured out the design calculations and what, what the best method's going to be yet, so we're working on that detail.
Do you have any strong references either way?
I don't. I, you know, I hate to say it, the sewer is going to be private, you know, that system is going to be maintained by the homeowners, out to the point where it connects in on Moore Street. So as far as a, a maintenance component, or it's not on the town to do that work, you know, will be up to the homeowners association to main that sewer system. You know, we'll take ownership of, of the water line, you know, with the hydrants in, in that system, so.
From a safety standpoint, is one mechanism better than the other?
I don't think so.
Any other questions from here? Does any member of the public have any questions for these gentlemen? Joan, before you begin...
Excuse me, Joan Gallivan.
Yeah, but even before you begin, I want to make a point. At the very, very first meeting, I asked everybody to be succinct and to the point.
I understand.
And last meeting, I let you go on and on and on, shame on me, so if you could really just get to the point quickly, I would really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Need to come to a microphone? Can you come to a microphone? It was published that the people on Moore Street could not tie in, maybe that was at a certain time, and the sewer went right by their, their house. So I imagine that this is an application that, you know, has requested whatever the body is that gives permission to tie in and use some of the capacity we have here in Foxborough to that, you know, number of units, 52 units. Is that so that the people on Moore Street that are, you know, existing homes there haven't been able to tie in?
So there, there was a time? Sure, so there was a time in Foxborough when Mansfield owned the treatment plant that Foxborough, Mansfield, and Norton are all connected to. So they hit 80% of their capacity at that plant, and the state told them, no more. Over the years, in the, you know, the last 10 years I've been here, prior to that, the Mansfield, Foxborough, Norton sewer district has been formed, the plant has been upgraded and added on to. There is additional capacity over there now, and we are in the business of selling sewer and water as the chair of the commission says. So we're open. We've had properties since I've been in town in the last nine years that have connected on Moore Street. The Borough School recently connected to the sewer system on Moore Street. So there has, you know, been an application to the Warren Sewer Commission for this property. Anybody on that street. It would, it would require getting added into the sewer district with the caveat that if your septic system has failed, we can't deny you. So it is, it is open for, open for business.
But, but from our perspective, as far as this application, there's more than enough capacity.
Correct.
Any other questions? Yes, and actually, if you can come up here, it might be easier and identify yourself.
Big desk, huh?
You can preach to us.
Bill Cook, 112 Spring Street.
Couple of questions. Has anybody thought about the water? We're in a water situation now where, you know, we're handheld watering and things like that. Do we have enough water to actually supply 52 units?
We do. So.
How do we determine that?
So the watering restrictions have been in place and will forever be in place. Those are set by Mass DEP, they're set by the Water Resources Commission, and they're set by our Water Management Act permit. So back in 2008, when the town applied for the first treatment plant down at the Witch Pond site, they, those three bodies came in and said, we'll let you put your treatment plant in there, we'll let you put your wells in there, but here's what you're going to have to follow forever and always. Every time we go back with a new application, they get to review those permits, and they can try to put more restrictions on us. We haven't seen anything worse since that 2008 permit came through. We are with the four new wells down at Chestnut Street that are now online for about two years, three new wells down at Oak Street, we have one new well down at Witch Pond, and then we're getting ready to tie the three wells down at Sprague Road over to the Witch Pond Treatment Plant. We'll have 12 wells online in the system, all going through green sand filter plants. And we will have, I, part of the, part of what we're doing is, we do leak detection through the system. We found a major leak over at the old laundry building behind Dexter and Capone Road on Payson. We, unfortunately, we found it luckily, but we estimated it was probably half a million gallons per day that was leaking through that service. So yes, year-to-date since we found that leak, we're pumping 100 million gallons less year-to-date than we did a year ago. So 52 residential units, or 46, or whatever the number ends up being, is, will not be a problem for the wells and the water.
That's not the only unit going in town, you got over by the post office.
Sure.
Yeah, how many units in there?
50.
So we keep adding and adding, and it's going to put a drain on the system eventually.
But when you look at, you know, the 75 bedrooms that are going in at 29 Wall Street, it's 6,000 gallons per day. So we just found a leak, there was half a million gallons per day.
Then I, I think about what Dave was saying, how he needs the 20, 20-feet of road and other sidewalks going in. I've been in Foxborough for 55 years, and I walk around Spring Street and County Street. I can't even walk on the sidewalks on County Street, they're so bad. And we don't have any sidewalks on Spring Street, and we're worried about giving them 20-foot roads in this complex? I mean, you know, we should be taking care of residents that have already been in Foxborough for many years. Unfortunately, we're worried about these people that are putting in 52 units with six visitor parking spots. How do we come up with six visitor parking spots? How was that determined? Does anybody have an answer for that?
Well, we'll discuss that a little bit later, because the number's been increased.
Why later?
When?
Why later? Why can't we discuss it now?
We'll discuss. The number's been increased.
Okay.
But that's not a question for, for these gentlemen.
I can answer that. The way it was initially determined was by the zoning requirements. I mean, we met the zoning requirements for parking as any project would, so.
And my understanding is you've increased the visitor spaces to 15?
Yes, we've increased the visitor spaces.
Road, you know, the roadway system in there is being constructed by the applicant, not the town. That's a private road, I think, really, when we've all said and done.
Private road, so we don't plow it?
Correct.
And that width of 20 feet is a, is a standard that's, that's used nationally for, you know, like for fire protection road and stuff, so it's actually a pretty good road. There's, some roads can be a little narrower, but that, that 20 feet is, is a, it's a standard that's used. You know, it's a pretty common width.
Okay. If I think of something else, I'll be there.
Anyone else? Yes?
I think you know me, Carl Van Hidemore, 109 Morris.
I got a couple of questions, and this one, I might just be misunderstanding it. But from the memo from the town engineer dated June 30, 2022, item number four, sewer. DPW just completed a hydraulic model on the sewer system. In the segment manhole-to-manhole of sewer main, immediately downstream from this project, does that match capacity? Does that mean it's full? Am I misunderstanding that?
Sure, so there was actually another project that came forward that had significantly more flow than this project is proposing. Actually, at the beginning of that system in Sharon, we did a hydraulic model of that system from the beginning of the line in Sharon all the way down to the lift station that ends at the end of Moore Street at North Main Street. It did show there were various pipe segments that were, as far as design capacity goes, were at max capacity. So what that means is the pipe is 50% full as it flows. So one of those pipe segments was the section directly below or downstream of where this property would connect to. So we have had that conversation with the applicant and the, and Mr. Buckley that the, whichever project comes first will be responsible for upgrading that pipe segment for the additional flow. So whether it's this project is, is constructed first, or the one at the beginning of the pipeline is constructing first, there is a 230, 50, 250-foot pipe section that will need to be upsized to handle any additional capacity.
Does that run down the causeway between the ponds?
It's not, no, it's on, it's, it's on the upstream side of the pond.
Okay, all right. Second question concerning the fire truck turning radius and the models that were represented. I love the fact that you guys did use the larger, heavier truck, you know, for, for future expenditures. I noticed in that model, I don't know if we can, we can bring that up, you're driving on front lawns. You know, the very first turn, as you come over the bridge and take a right, you're hitting the guy's front lawn on, on the unit, like directly in front of you. And then as you work your way around the development and get to the backside, there, you know, literally 90-degree turns right there. I'd be a little concerned, you know, not only driving over people's lawns, but, you know, any car that's going to be in the way there is going to be a pretty big impediment to any fire apparatus or emergency vehicles.
Yeah, that's what I touched on a little, that we'd have to have no parking on turns and stuff. I don't believe anything's encroaching on the, on the lawns. Is there, can you, would that be able to be brought up to?
And then like you mentioned, Dave, you know, during snowstorms, you know, we'll have some pretty massive banks there. And, you know, as we all know, in New England, snowbanks aren't just snowbanks, these become glaciers. You know, you're not going to drive through it. At least my car, where Jeep isn't going to get through that, it's going to wreck my car. Fire truck's probably a little more durable, but it is, is still probably a problem.
Bill, can you bring that up?
I'm, I'm looking for it. I have it. It'll be up in a sec here.
While Bill's bringing that up, my, my third question is concerning the upgrade to the water line from 119 O to the Moore Street, Spring Street link. We, we know the end of that is, is definitely in the bordered, vegetated wetlands. A little concerned that we're, you know, literally going to cut a 25-foot swath right through those woods. And I, I think it touches more into the wetlands than has initially been told to us. I just, I, I would hope that the board would continue to listen to the conservation agent and her reservations about that. And another point of fact, this is just a little history, that that water main has broke out there. I, we've lived at that location 40 years. I've lived there. That water main through, you know, Moore Street to Spring has broke like at least three times. And twice while Arthur Kelly was the resident there, and once while the newest owner had his project back there with, with the handicap clients. And what has happened is they, they literally run a 500-foot hose from the tap on my house, and we pushed the water up there. I would like to think that being a good neighbor. It's, it's obviously something with, we, there's no question that we would do this for Arthur and for Mike and his project there now. But, um, yeah, that was a concern out there. I think what has happened since those water main breaks is, I want to say about 10 years, maybe 11 years, they did come down there and they re-lined that whole section of pipe, which was, which was pretty cool. They actually backed an 18-wheeler down that path. They came through where the trailers are all parked out there, and they backed a 18-wheeler all the way down that path. So, um, yeah, just a, just a little history for that area right there.
Yeah, that, that lining was probably about six years ago.
Six, okay.
Yeah, 2000, I think it was about 2016 when we did that work.
That's pretty impressive.
I don't know why it's not coming out.
We got it here. You can just throw up any concept drawing.
So I can, I can talk to this. It, it doesn't show going up on anybody's driveway, doesn't show going up on anybody's grass. The town's consultant reviewed it, traffic consultant, I'm sure you could ask her later about it.
Yeah, we're satisfied with it.
So that was misinterpreted. That's the answer.
The driveways, driveways represent a parallel line going all the way around the development, and this model.
As, as I look at the truck turning plan, and, you know, Dave and Chris are looking at it now, it looked like there was no problem.
That's right.
Obviously, parking on the street and snow room will, will going to be issues, and we'll deal with them if, if we get to that point.
Well, just do me a favor and just scrutinize that drawing. Thank you, folks.
So just to add to the story about the lining of the water main, sir. Just to add to your story about the lining of the water main. They've also done that on some streets, including my street. And it solved a problem of multiple water main breaks, as you described, over a very short period of time, like a weekend one time, we had three, so. Yeah, the lining works, very happy.
You don't see a problem?
No, that is the plan, that was the latest plan submitted, and it doesn't show anything leaving the roadway. So anything that we saw does not leave, it stays on the roadway. That's the newest one, so I'm not sure if they have, they might not have the newest one. That's September.
That's the only plan we.
Is that the only one?
The only one I have.
Okay.
So, and, and again, the key would be no vehicles parked on the roadway and appropriate snow removal.
Yeah, and especially they have to pay attention to the turns, like we mentioned earlier.
Well, Mike, I mean, I'm not going to suggest how you train your firefighter drivers, but that might be a place to go practice every now and again.
Any other questions for these gentlemen? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very helpful, we appreciate it. Thank you. If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay. We won't ask any more questions. Bill, what I'd like to do next, as I mentioned before, is if you can just walk through the revisions that have been made in the last several weeks.
I, I will, Mr. Chairman, let me, Paul and I are still trying to get this up here on the screen.
No, the video is not, the camera still has the slash line through it, so you're not sending.
So what's, what do you think I should do?
Paige says she can see the plans at the, at home, so you just need to get it on this.
Right, we can see them at home, but you can't see it up there. So if you could just maybe open the plans, open the drawings.
Right, but Paige is saying that the people on Zoom can see the plans. So we can't, we just can't see it on this one.
The video just shows my pretty face, but okay.
That's a matter of opinion.
Okay. All right, well, I will talk to it, I'm going to try and talk you through it. I think if you would go to the, my drawings and go to page two, and I'm going to talk you through the changes we made. So if you look at the, the end of the, where the, the end of the duplexes are, and you'll note that all the way out to Moore Street, we've widened that to 20 feet. We've added a four-foot sidewalk, if you recall during our last discussion. We discussed that at length, and the board said that they wanted that, so we've added that in there. And again, that will be when we go talk to the Conservation Commission. That's important to point out that the board made the decision that we want 20 feet plus a sidewalk, because as I stated on the Wellands Protection Act, you will decide what constitute adequate access for the purposes of what's called a limited project. Next thing you'll notice, the, the bridge, we've widened the bridge, we've listed it as 20 feet wide with a four-foot sidewalk. So now you'll be able to walk throughout the site on sidewalks out to Moore Street. Going out to Moore Street, you can see on the left, as you're looking at the drawing, we've added a school bus shelter. That was the one comment that was brought up by the school department in their comment letter to us. So we added that shelter, and what I modeled that after, we don't have a, an architectural, but it'll be similar to what's up on Fisher Street, which is basically an open shelter with a roof, with seating inside there. And the, on the right side, we've added a mailbox kiosk, if you look at the drawing. Your drawing again on sheet two, we've added a mailbox kiosk there as well.
That would cover the whole development?
Yeah, actually, that's what Foxborough is, what Postmaster requires on regular subdivisions now. They don't, they don't deliver even the mailboxes anymore. If you go up to the site, go up to the top of the project between buildings F and G, we've added three parking spaces there. So we've added three parking spaces in that area. And I'm going to, I'm going to actually change my sharing. And then if you go down to the bottom, opposite the existing duplex, which we call 11/12, in the, in north of the gazebo, we've added two more parking spaces in that area there. in the, in north of the gazebo, we've added two more parking spaces in that area there. So, now we have a total of 15 parking spaces on the site.
And those are like visitor spaces, those?
15, yeah, extra spaces. And let me just, I'm going to talk to that.
Yeah, so the, I think initially you said you had six, but then you said you had a miscount of something, three.
I don't know, maybe I did, but we have, I think originally we had...
Somehow the six went to 10.
We had 10, and now we have 15 on the site. Let me just, I want to point you to the, if you go to the front sheet, the cover sheet of the project, in the upper-left corner, which is the, I've modified the zoning table. So, the bottom zoning table, I didn't have this on before, but since there was so much talking about parking, I wanted to add this to you. You'll note in our list of waivers, we didn't ask for any waivers for parking. That's because we don't need any. So, each duplex unit, shockingly enough, I didn't even realize this, a single or a duplex in Foxborough only requires one parking space. So, that means we're required 12 parking spaces for each of the duplex units. And then the multifamilies have kind of an odd, I don't know, definition. So, you need two per unit plus two visitor spaces for each eight units. So, in my simple mind, that's 2.25 units, 2.25 spaces per unit. So, what if you have six? Does that mean you need, it's kind of odd. So, I just use 2.25. Actually, the board, that's what I've used for decades, so any other permit that you've looked at has the same parking calculation. So, that means we're required to have 90 spaces for the multis. Each multi has two already, one in the driveway, one for a garage. So, it's a total of 102 spaces is required for the entire project. We have 117 spaces on the site. So, that's the parking calculation, we're not asking for a waiver. It's no different from any other project you might see. Go to any apartment complex in Foxborough, it's 2.25. It's been that way for 36 years and probably longer than that, because that's as long as I've been doing it. So, the next thing you do, I would ask you to go to is sheet three. And sheet three, I know these are hard to see, but if you look on the, on the right side of the, around the buildings, not around the buildings, as you come in on the driveway, have added some streetlights. And they're low lights, they're 12-foot high, they are residential-type lamp posts, that's what we want to have. We want to have just residential-type lamp posts. So, we've added that around the project site. It's definitely not street lighting, it's very similar to the Cary Lane project, if you've ever driven, I'm sure you have driven down there. So, those streetlights there. We've added the location of transformers, and we've added the location of propane tanks around the buildings. We don't really know where the transformers are going to go, we just don't. I'm guessing based on experience, but Mass, whatever they call it today, National Grid Eversource, they're the ones who make the decision, but that, it's a good representation that lets you see, I think the issue was because the site is tight for a, you know, Foxborough project, you know, is there going to be room? So, we show you where the transformers could possibly be. We also don't know, as I stated before, and we're digging into this more as we're getting into this, there's no gas in front here, natural gas, but there is natural gas over by the bleachery, there is natural gas down by...
Iris.
Iris, Iris Lane. So, it is possible to be brought up, it's an economic question, but, so that could be a potential thing if we bring in gas, but if we had to do propane, what I'm showing you is 500-gallon, two 500-gallon tanks, I think, per building. And what a 500-gallon tank usually is, we use them for residential homes, four-bedroom houses. So, you're looking at, these are 16-bedroom things, and so, that's how we just kind of brought them in there. But there's certainly enough room to do that as well. I've added some additional detail on the drainage on this sheet as well, the water sewer, I don't think I need to go into detail on it. Really, it was more for environmental partners to look at, so that they would get a comfort level that we could comply with the DEP stormwater standards for the project. So, and those are the major things that we've changed from the last iteration.
Now, the superseding order from DEP, how's that going to impact things?
Okay.
You know we're going to ask you.
Yeah.
Can we try sharing your screen instead of sharing the PDF? I don't know if it'll make a difference.
Oh, I don't know, yeah. Let me do a screen share.
If you do the same thing you've been doing, but instead of selecting the PDF, you can select your actual screen.
You do it. Yeah, I'm going to get, I'm going to get out of this. Why is this not doing?
Use them all the way back out, the drawing.
I don't know. Let me back out.
There you go. Did it change anything? Not really.
Yeah, this is, this is weird today.
Bill, we are getting your video from your camera, we're not getting the screen sharing.
Okay.
That you have to send. And screen sharing is activated.
Okay. I don't know why. I'm going to have to get out of this Zoom and come back in, maybe, Jeremy, you can pass those up to the board while we're doing this. Here is your...
Yes, we're active in Zoom.
Yeah.
Are you going to share? So, where share screen is? I was saying, instead of selecting a PDF, if you actually select the screen, you'll show everything that's on your screen. I don't, I don't know if it'll make a difference, but at least there's a different way than always tried.
Still not showing up. Still not showing up.
Bill, do you want Paul? Paul, if I put this over here, can you zoom your camera on it if I put it under this one? I don't know where his camera is either, but...
Oh, good.
So, that's four less.
It's at the end, if you just put it on here. There you go. That's it.
Left, move it, Diane.
Where you want it.
Yep, move it over. See the screen?
Oh, there it is.
All right, so, we've obviously given you a printed copy, hopefully folks can kind of see that plan. So, again, this, this not, in addition to what we're about to talk about, I will suggest that we've also revised this to address a number of the things that Bill suggested. So, we showed the 20-foot roadway going all the way out to Moore Street, showed the mail kiosk, showed the bus shelter, showed the sidewalk. So, the major change here is really in that lower right-hand corner. We used to have a pair of duplexes adjacent to the pond. We recently received a new riverfront setback delineation, and those two duplexes would be within that new area. So that if we were to move forward with that setback, that would be a challenge to keep those. As I understand it, we do have the ability to, you know, contest the new wetlands, the new riverfront setback line, but we also are aware that folks have been concerned about the density of the scheme, et cetera. So, one thought that we had to propose tonight was that we would be willing to remove those two duplexes, so we'd be reducing the count from 52 to 48. If that was acceptable, that's something we could move forward with without potentially contesting the line. There's a portion of the fourplex that is inside of the riverfront setback area, but there are also other procedures that you're allowed to have certain percentages of things that do still impact in that area. So, that is something that we would pursue doing, so that we wouldn't lose that building in addition to the two duplexes, so...
Is it 52 to 48 or 44? I thought it was 44.
52 to 48.
48? Okay.
Yeah, so the duplexes each had two units, there were the two buildings. So, that would be a reduction of four total units. Otherwise, the plan stays as it was. Like I said, we just updated the roadway going out to the edge and pulled those four units from the scheme in this proposed version.
From an affordable standpoint, it'll be 13 to 12, right? Yeah.
From what was that?
From an affordable standpoint, it'll be going from 13 to 12.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so, the building that you said was impacted, is that I?
That would be I, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you can make up, there's a, there's a dark blue line that might be hard to see in your print, so it kind of cuts diagonally through kind of the middle of the building, so half of it's in, half of it's out. That's where we would make a case that, with, especially because they have percentages that you're allowed to go within those setback areas, we think we could still viably make a case for that one still being okay.
So, the area where the duplexes are would just be kept as?
Grass.
Grass.
Open space.
Yeah, I'd say green, but it was brown when I was there in the summer.
Right. You can't, so when you're in a riverfront area, and it, you can, there's a, you can alter a certain percentage of it, and by alter it means, you know, change. So, that's, that's green now, it's grass, and it would be retained in some type of landscape, and we'd be adding some trees and stuff in there along the roadway, but it would be green.
I mean, would you be even able to use it like for a picnic areas or a playground?
Sure, you can use it, you can use it for many different things, but it has to be...
No buildings, obviously.
It has to be natural, right? Can't be paved, can't be gravel, can't be any building or anything like that.
Okay. Any questions in that regard? No, thanks. Kurt, Paige, Scott, I see Jody's there now, any questions concerning this?
Not for me at this time, Barney.
Okay.
Not at this time, thank you.
Dylan, any questions from your standpoint?
Nope, not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I probably should have asked you, as far as Bill's summary, as far as the revisions, you're, you're set with them as well, no questions on those?
Yep, yeah, I think Bill gave a great summary, and we also took a look at the truck turning template, and I just want to make it be known that typically those truck turning templates in the software are very conservative by nature. So, I don't think there's an issue with the truck turning template that they had done.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, um, yes.
Kathy, Vandenberg 109, Morse. I just want to say that we worked really hard on that appeal, and it's really important to us to protect that riverfront for a lot of reasons. And I understand that there can be a percentage of the building that is allowed to be in the riverfront, but we were really happy about keeping the whole construction trucks, the whole construction debris, whatever you want to call it, off the river. That's, that was our intent, and we worked really hard to protect that river. So, even if there is an exception that could be made, I just want it known that we spent hours and hours out there taking video, and we paid for this entire appeal, because that was the way it worked when the commission approved it, it was on us to do the appeal as opposed to the applicant to do a peer review. So, this was on our dime, we worked really hard, and we'd really like to see the entire riverfront be protected.
Let me ask a question, and this might show my ignorance. Would you need Conservation Commission authorization?
Yes, the riverfront regulations are Wetlands Protection Act, so we have to file under the, we have to file under the Wetlands Protection Act. So, the Conservation Commission will be the one who does the review of compliance with the, with the Wetlands Protection Act, and that's what the riverfront falls under.
But this is a friendly 40B, and this is important to me, and apparently to a lot of people in Foxborough. So, we would just like to see the applicant treat this as a friendly 40B and say, you know what, this is important to the town, we want to do this development, but we want to do it for the town, with the town, and not have everything be, we're going to do it unless you tell us that we can't. So, if I understand this correctly, the applicant can apply to CONCOM with respect to building I, and they would discuss with you the percentages, et cetera, what you alluded to. So, a decision on, with respect to building I would be, reside with CONCOM?
And any, any activity within the riverfront, which that building is partially in, or within the buffer zone, will lie with the Conservation Commission when we file with them under the Wetlands Protection Act, yes?
Okay, so that would be one option, and another option would be the applicant can just make a decision?
Yes.
With respect to I, which does not necessitate a trip to CONCOM? So, those are the two options as we look at?
No, we would, we have, we have to go to Conservation, no matter what. It's just a question of when we're dealing with the riverfront, you know, what, what activity will be allowed within the riverfront? And then there are, you know, it's not just a, it's not just completely discretionary, there are criteria that we have to meet and the Conservation Commission has to follow. And that's what we were alluding to, is some of the criteria, just for your knowledge, is you can't do any activity within 100 feet, no activity at all. Now, you're looking at the bridge, and you're looking at the driveway, that's, that's a separate section of the Wetlands Protection Act, it's called a limited project, so, which means there's no other way to get in, so they, they can't deny that. So, they, that, that is what will apply. And then the other thing is that you calculate the area of your property that lies within 200 feet of the river, and you can only alter 10% of that. So, that's the alteration, and that 10% has to be outside the 100 feet. So, those are just some of the things you have to deal with, and we just have to deal with them, that part of the Wetlands Protection Act. But we have to go see them, no matter what, whether we eliminate that building or not, because all of the other buildings along the pond and the driveway itself and the bridge all fall under the Wetlands Protection Act and all would fall under the Rivers Act portion of it.
No, I understand that. My question was specifically regarding I.
Oh, I.
So, just with I, so the two options before the applicant are to continue on with the request for building I to CONCOM, or the applicant could decide that building I no longer exists. Those are the two options in front of you. I certainly understand everything else that you just said.
Okay, sorry.
But, but those are, those are the two options for the applicant.
I mean, I don't know if you want to count it as a third option, but if CONCOM has an issue with something we're doing, we could also adjust the scheme, we could shift the drive eight feet, if that's what we need to do to comply with the regulations as they see them. So, I don't, I don't think it's an all or nothing, it might also be that we're close, we need to make some adjustments, and they would be happy, so...
But as designed, in here, you're intending to go to CONCOM?
Yes.
With building I.
That's, that's what we're looking at right now, yes.
And that's a state issue, so it's beyond our control.
Yeah, Barney, they, the 40B waves the town wetland bylaw, but not the state wetland bylaw.
Right, but it's a state issue because of the river.
That's why they need to go to CONCOM.
Yeah.
Get another break.
Want to take a break?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we take another five minutes?
I'm sorry. I'm a little.
You have time for Nago here?
Just trying to understand why.
Or are the environmental issues? It's just about nine o'clock. We're not, I don't think, going to finish that tonight. We have another meeting in three weeks, on October the twentieth. And we'll pick it up at that point as well. And one reason I say I don't think we're going to finish is I got a couple of administrative matters that I want to talk about, and I do hope we can wrap up tonight at ten o'clock. There was a Phase One site assessment done by Nago Consulting, and I understand there's a representative of Nago here?
Yes, Jim Parker is here.
Okay, if you would join us.
Sure.
And just to summarize, we'll have some questions for you, I'm sure.
I had some beautiful slides, but Bill assured me that we had. So we did an ASDM Phase One on the property, which is records review, site inspection, and we did an initial assessment. We didn't identify any conditions off-site. We identified two things onsite we were concerned about. It looked like there was historic underground storage in the property, there was a fill port near the garage, and there was a floor drain inside a garage. We came out and we did some ground penetrating radar around those areas to see if there were any tanks. Couldn't find a tank, but we still weren't confident that there wasn't anything there because there was evidence that there had been a tank there. So we came out and dug test pits around the garage, and we put some probes inside the floor drain. We evaluated in the field for VOCs, petroleum hydrocarbons, did lab analysis. We didn't detect anything that significant that triggered any reporting obligations, any indications of release. Based on that, we concluded that there were no recognized environmental conditions on the property. We did look quite extensively at the property next to, obviously, the bleetry. I also have some historic knowledge. I had done work on that property back in the late nineteen nineties, early two thousands, so I was familiar with the conditions over there. I know the big issue here is groundwater. We looked at, and the way we look at that is, on an ASDM Phase One, we do an environmental database search, and that database search, they identify, they look at regional wells, they identify groundwater flow direction. We did that. That was to the southwest from across the site.
Works.
And we look at, oh, look at that.
Yippee.
People came through. So when we do environmental assessment, that's one of the first things we do, and we look at that, and that identifies wells in the area, and then it identifies a regional groundwater flow direction, which is that right there, which is an arrow pointing that way. This is the site right here. I'm sorry, that's actually the pond, the site is, there's a star right there. And so it looks at regional hydrologic information, it comes with the groundwater flow direction, which is that arrow right there, so that's what we looked at. Can you go to the next slide, Bill?
I hope so.
We've seen these before, am I correct? In your reports?
They were in the report. So then, this is, you wouldn't have seen this, but this is online, what we look at. So this is sort of a zoom in on the site. So this is the site right here, there's the pond, and so here's that arrow again. Then we look at the hydrology. So we're looking at this stream coming down here, we're looking at this stream here. This all moves down in this direction relative to these sites. So these are the listed sites. This is the summit casting site. This is the bleetry site, which is actually this large area here. This is just an aerial showing the same thing, which is hard to see in the dark. So, I mean, that's what we look at. We look at the groundwater flow direction, and then at a site like with the bleetry site, we go in and review all those files, and we look, okay, what did they, what's the extent of release, and what did they look at for hydrology? And so the summit casting site, which is to the southwest of the site, they had groundwater going to the south. The Altron building on the other side of the brook, they had it going to the southwest. The assessment that was done for the back part of the bleetry had it going to the south. So it was all consistent with that flow direction. So based on that, we look at those releases, but we concluded that they were, those are down gradient from the site and wouldn't have any impact. We also look at the specific data on the site. So we looked at the data that's been collected. We looked at the historic stuff going back to the early EPA sampling. We looked at those samples. We looked at the more recent stuff.
So what, I'm going to ask you, I'm trying to put things up, but what, when you say early sample, and what timeframe are we talking about?
It was the late eighties, early nineties. I mean, DP's been out at the bleetry site since the seventies, mid-seventies.
Okay.
There's been a lot going on there for a lot of years, but, so when we do an ASDM Phase One, the question is, are there anything that would be considered what they call recognized environmental condition? We identify these offsite releases, but based on the hydrology information and the information about the sites, we concluded that it was unlikely there'd be significant impact from the site, essentially that water's flowing in the other direction. Also, looking at the contaminants in the site themselves, I know there's a lot of, there's been a lot of historic dumping and things like that, but we looked specifically at the contaminants. There's a lot of petroleum issues there, which don't concern us too much in terms of movement. And I know an issue was raised about VOCs and indoor air issues. The, there were some solvents, and that was identified in the database in the summit casting site, but the levels were below drinking water standards. They were pretty low levels. So I didn't see anything that indicated there was a significant plume of VOCs, there would be an issue for indoor air on this site if you developed it. The closest site, the summit casting site, they've gone to Phase Three, which is, Phase Two, they've completely delineated the release, and Phase Three, they've evaluated remedial alternatives. And in that, they didn't identify anything that would have impacted the property. They also had groundwater moving away from the property to the southwest. So that's essentially what we've done.
So summit castings. What sort of casting were they doing? You know?
And related to that, what would they be dumping?
Yeah, so they would have casting sand that they use as mold, so.
Mold sand, but what kind of metals?
Yeah, they would use probably lead and copper and things like that. There were casting sands there, they were sampled. They've sampled those wells for metals. You know, I actually thought you'd see a lot of metals out there. I didn't know, particularly lead, right? That's what we'd be concerned with. All the data along the, found, along the property here, the lead and arsenic levels were all fairly low. EPA, when they first came in, that was one of their big concerns, because they use what's called a XRF device, where you can actually real-time screen for metals, and they did transect through the property. And the levels weren't that significant. They had some on the western side of the property. That was part of their initial assessment of the site. But I know the casting sands had been evaluated, and there's been quite a bit of, where those were piled, there were quite a bit of monitoring wells and test pits and borings put on that property. But that's all off-site.
So you're saying that the releases were, what was the term they used? The releases are downstream? That wasn't the term you used?
Down gradient.
Down gradient.
Those, if you go to DP's files and you look at that, those would be down gradient. Now, there's historic reference to filling up here. There was actually, they got an approved permit to do landfilling, and then that permit got revoked. But there's historic reference to filling up here. I actually looked at this data. That data wasn't too significant, just PAHs. You know, that may be, that portion, which really hasn't been evaluated on the DP, other than the historic stuff back in the eighties, you know, that probably could be side gradient, not necessarily down gradient. But when you look at the site from a regional standpoint, you know, that material, anything in groundwater is going to move south or southwestally from that site. And again, we didn't see anything, it's not, we didn't see a significant plume of chlorinated solvents or anything like that. It looked like mainly petroleum metal stuff, PAHs, which are going to be superficial things.
You didn't do any monitoring wells? Anything of that nature?
No, we, based on our initial assessment, we were concerned about the potential underground storage in the floor drain that was in the garage. So we assessed both of those. We dug test pits, we looked at the soil grown interface, we screened for VOCs. That's just sort of a normal thing of what we do when we're looking, because, you know, we want to get sort of a general idea of what was around the garage. And if we had tested at the soil grown water interface and had high levels of VOCs, then it'd make us say, okay, well, there's something here we should look at. But we didn't get any of that.
But the testing idea was proximate to the existing building?
The garage, which is right behind the residence. Because there was actually a fill port behind the building that, and we could tell from looking inside the building, there was a furnace back there. And so we used ground penetrating radar to see, we assumed there was a tank there, but we found no tank. But I wasn't really satisfied because there was a pipe there, so we went out and actually dug test pits to, and we chased the pipe to its end. There had been a tank, and it had been removed. It was a heating oil tank, we found the feed line and all that. But there were no indications of impact from that.
Any other test pits dug? Sorry, Dave. Any other test pits dug away from the garage?
Not by me, but I know as a part of this development, they dug a number of test pits across the site. Is that correct, Bill?
Yes, correct.
You know.
But that wasn't for the same purposes as what you dug?
Correct, correct, correct.
You start it. Yeah, so if you did find, if during construction, and they found some oil, some more, some stuff in the ground, I can't even say more stuff, that remediation would be just pretty much a much a removal of that?
Depends what it is. I mean, probably would be. It depends what it is and how big it is, but, you know, that stuff actually happens fairly often.
And when you think, the thing I've been kind of wondering is what every, when you think about the site, and the potential environmental hazards that there might be, is it more breathing versus contamination of soil? I mean, what's water contaminating? I mean, what do you think?
So that's what we look for. We look for evidence that would indicate that you would have a problem, and that you would have it at a level that would represent any risk. I mean, it's all in terms of whether or not you have to do anything or remediate. It's all driven by risk. So, you know, you could have something, but it could be at such a low level, it doesn't represent any risk. You know, we didn't identify anything. That's the purpose of what we were looking at. We were looking for those things, and we didn't identify anything that would force us to look, to go to the next step, right? So, you know, if we had, you know, say in the floor drain, we found something, or we screened it, and we found high levels of VOCs, they weren't, you know, that would indicate to us that there's a problem. And then we would go and put borings in wells, you know? We took lab samples, we test them. When you do lab analysis, you compare those to standards established by the DP. If you exceed those standards, you report it to the DP, and then you have to go through an assessment process. You have to assess the extent of it, characterize it, determine whether or not there's any risk associated with it. If there is, you have to do something to mitigate that, and that could be removal, it could be restriction of access. There's all kinds of things you can do.
Okay. Ryan, any questions?
No.
Thank you. Kurt, any questions for Mr. Nagel? For Mr., no, not Mr. Nagel, from Nagel.
Jim Parker.
Mr. Parker?
Nothing so far, Bonnie.
Paige?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Judy?
No, Mr. Chair, nothing from me. Thank you.
Okay. Scott, any questions?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Actually, I do have another question. So, well, I would actually like to see if she has any comments, too? Do we have her this evening? But I do have a question before we get to that. And that is, one of the things that was indicated last month was that there would be watering from a well on-site for the establishment of the landscape plan that was discussed last month. And I'm a little bit concerned as to what might come up with those wells that would then be sprayed into the air where children play, people are breathing, dogs roll around, and then go into people's residences.
I would imagine they would have to test and get a permit to do that by the Board of Health, and they would evaluate a host of parameters.
Okay.
If you don't mind, why don't you let me jump in here on that? I knew you asked that last time, Kim, so I did some research, and Foxborough Board of Health has actually just promulgated, like in the last year or so, their own wells, their own regulations. And I would put them up on the screen, and I'm afraid to take that off. But I'm gonna read it to you. It's actually on page 10. And it says, "For all drinking water and irrigation wells, water quality tests utilizing the applicable USAA-approved shall be conducted." So it's not a discretionary, it shall be constructed by a mass or EPA-certified laboratory. So here's what they have to test for. Arsenic, chloride, copper, hardness, sodium fluoride, iron, lead, manganese, pH, chloroform nitrate, E. coli. And then there's another section that says, if you're in a drinking water irrigation wells, downgrading from hazardous material storage site, known area of hazardous material release, or other source of contamination, the Health Department may require testing for water quality parameters. And then, this testing may include, but is not limited to, inorganic compounds, synthetic organic compounds, and volatile organic compounds. And then there's another section, which is the next page, 11, which says that they can ask, if necessary due to local conditions or for protection, they can ask for additional parameters. So, it must be done by the Board of Health. I've just kind of read it to you. I'm sorry, I can't put it up there, but you can download their regs. For the, you have to test for those things. They may require extra testing, and then they can require testing beyond that even. So if the Board thought that it was appropriate, you could acquire as a condition that you, that they shall do that additional testing for the inorganic, volatile organic, synthetic organic compounds, which is a "may," they don't necessarily have to. So you could take it to the next level if you chose to do something like that.
Molly, are you still with us?
I am.
I know you've read the site assessment report. Would you comment on it, please?
Yep, I've read the site assessment report, and I've read additional information on Mass, DEP's online file viewer, and I'm actually familiar with the area, Summit Casting, the Bleachery, from my prior experience at DEP. And I think while the report, they did look at a couple of, you know, potential source areas, I think what DEP concluded in their, I think, 2019 screening audit of a report that was submitted for a portion of, you know, for one of the lots on this, it concluded that additional assessment was needed on several specific lots, one of them being 3702, which is the lot in question. And so I think it's not necessarily just groundwater either. If you're going to be taking a property that's associated with a former, you know, industrial type use, and you're turning it into residential, there's a different bar for, you know, what you would look for, what concentrations you would compare any results to before you go ahead and turn it into residential, and you end up with a bunch of private owners of these units. And if something's found down the road, and this has happened on at least two other similar type redevelopments that I'm aware of, you end up with a bunch of individual property owners who are named as responsible parties largely because the necessary assessment wasn't done ahead of time. So, you know, I think our recommendation is that before any construction would occur, that some additional, that assessment of soil and groundwater conditions on that specific lot be conducted to ensure that you're not gonna be exposing any future residents to unacceptable risk under the state's site cleanup program.
And that, so I just, that investigation would be limited to the lot area where this project is proposed for? You say that lot?
Correct. What I'm saying is, regardless of whether the other properties, the Bleachery and Summit Casting, have had the necessary assessment, I think, prior to building residences on this property that we're discussing this evening, additional assessment would be prudent, and I think DEP even said it's necessary. Their screening audit form actually said, "We will evaluate whether additional RTNs, release tracking numbers should be issued for all of the lots." I don't believe they've issued any new ones, but I don't think that negates the fact that they said additional assessment was necessary.
Mr. Chair, I do have some questions about that. I did look at that letter, and I think there's a misunderstanding here that I'd like to try to clear up, if possible. Can you hear me, Molly?
Yes.
Oh. I'm a little confused, because, and I read your letter and thought, geez, how did I miss that this was a site that DEP is looking for response actions on? Because there were no, this was never part in the review of the history, there was no indications of any use of this portion or this property, even though it was owned by the, it was contiguous to the ownership of the Bleachery. There's no indication that there was any industrial or commercial activity done on this property. It was all, just that it was residential. And so, I read that same thing that you pointed out, that said, for Summit Castings, which is that site down to the southeast of it, Allen Hamburger had indicated that, yes, they've got a partial solution for this, but for the rest of the parcels within what they call the complex, the 22-acre complex, additional assessment will need to be performed, which sounds like what you're saying. The problem is, is this is not that parcel that you're referring to. You say in the letter that 119 Morris is parcel 3702. It is not. You're talking about the wrong parcel. So that reference that he's talking about is not talking about this site. That's talking about the Bleachery, which is the 22 acres. So he wasn't implying that anything needed to be done on that residential parcel. And you're implying that it is here.
Yeah, I think part of it was that your report indicated that the parcel that is going to be developed for residential purposes was originally...
It was under contiguous ownership, but there was no use on it that we found that was indicative of an industrial activity. Again, DP did not make that part of that tracking number. That is assigned to the Bleachery and also to Summit Castings, has nothing to do with that parcel. That parcel was created before DP was even issued a tracking number out there. It was subdivided. And again, historically, there were no indications of any industrial activity on that property. If there were, we certainly would have raised that issue. And I'm certain that there's no MCP obligation on that property. There's never been a notice responsibility issued to a property owner. So I think what you say, that that parcel is parcel 3702, it's not that parcel, it's a different parcel. The one that Allen's talking about includes 3702, but it's not the parcel that is the subject of this application.
Okay. I still, I think I stand with my, if you're gonna take a parcel in an area with known releases and known, you know, former use as...
Didn't have a former use.
What have you. I think, I think...
Talking about offsite releases.
Performing soil and groundwater assessment before you change the use of this parcel to what is proposed, it would be prudent to perform soil and groundwater assessment prior to constructing residences on the parcel.
I understand what you're saying, and I understand what she's saying. So it's a decision we're going to have to make.
Sure.
Molly, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for either Molly or this gentleman? Yes, go ahead. Both of you, or just one of you?
I take a little exception to the fact that you're confident that while it was a contiguous site, there would be no types of waste, like brought onto the 119 parcel. I show aerial photographs from like 1961 that, you know, shows it all wide open, no borders, no fences, no nothing. Straight roads running from the treatment centers right to the property. They used it more or less as a path. And in the back of the, I don't have a map, in the back of the parcel towards where the vernal pool is, there seem to be some striation pits that were in there, shown on the photo from 1961. One other thing I'd like to mention is, can we put up that drawing, the site drawing of the...
Don't confide it again.
Bill's still sharing, so he just needs to redirect us back to it.
It's sharing, I don't know.
Give him a second. Dave, you have a...
It's not up on, it's not saying anything on my screen. Says it's sharing.
Well, if we can envision the last drawing that was, you know, laid out, and, you know, the northeast corner is where the worst contamination on the site is present. I'm gonna read a little excerpt that was produced by the town back in, I think this was, report is from 1983, and I'm just gonna read one little blurb. This is also up on the website. It was presented by resident Drew Hoyt. "Between 1972 and 1982, Theodore Ricard, owner of Wells Trucking Rubbish Removal Firm, part-owner of Maryland Engineer, buried hazardous waste on the site. A made-up memo, made-dep memo, indicated that Ricard excavated 100 by 100 by 20 by 25-foot deep hole on the property." And that's why I wish I had the map, because it would be up in that north corner, Site 119's over here, the hazard is like right up here. If we could overlay a topograph map with that site map, I'm pretty sure it's a higher ground up there, and it is flowing a little bit towards the site. Maybe not directly onto the 119 site, but definitely onto the conservation property that buffers 119 in that northeast corner. This was bad stuff. You know, he was caught, and he was sighted. And apparently, there are photos. "Aerial photographs taken of the site May 4, 1974, show the clarifiers of the wastewater treatment plant in several lagoons. A considerable amount of disturbed earth and solid waste is visible on the photographs in that northeast corner." He was caught, first of all, he was caught. Then he was caught again, trying to like bury it up and hide it. And then he didn't do it quick enough, and then did something else further down the line. There's real bad stuff out here, guys. And I would be concerned that, you know, we're putting a lot of units here, we're gonna have a lot of kids. The kids are gonna go in the water. They're gonna climb that fence. They're gonna get out in the back. It's, I don't think we'd want that responsibility or that burden to go back to the town. God forbid something happens back there to one of those kids or anyone. Furthermore, the Porter site is roughly a half mile to the northwest, northeast of the entire site. When the Porter site was identified and some, you know, mediation efforts there, they did get contaminants down into the river, the Rumford River at that point. Where the Porter site was into the river, it's only about 100 yards, and everything is definitely down gradient from the bad stuff at the Porter site down to that river. So I think, in a sense, what I'm trying to say, more or less, is it's kind of surrounded by pollution. We've got the Porter site coming down, definitely down gradient down the river. Whether or not it's made it way, all the way down to this property is unknown, because I don't think we've had water testing. The Bleachery itself, we know the bad stuff over there. We know the stuff closest to the property, the Summit Casting and Textron. That water was, this same report that is up on the site, they did do water testing in there. There's all kinds of bad stuff in there. It reads like, I can even, you know, pronounce half of the bad stuff that's in here, but, you know, magnesium, nickel, potassium, sodium, vanadium, zinc, the benzos, benzofluorothene, I, again, I'm gonna butcher all those names, aluminum, arsenic, barium, calcium, chromium. There are noticeable levels in that area. So, I realize, we're talking a lot about this down gradient. Contaminants travel more than in the water, in a down gradient. There's airborne and there's conveyance. And I, you know, a southerly prevailing wind coming off that site is blowing right onto the 119 site, as well as my property, in conveyance. The picture, that 1961 photo shows, you know, the house is about right here. It's kind of hard to... It's kind of hard to show without a real, you know, property lines there, but...
Go to the next one, Bill.
Maybe you could submit those photos that you say you have, just, because I'd like to see them.
Yeah, they're in, we, we have submitted them.
They're in here somewhere else.
There are the assessors, if that helps.
The other one, okay, yeah. All right. So the bad area, the one I mentioned in the regular excerpt, is roughly in this area right here. And if we could put a topo map on here, I'm pretty sure it's flowing this way a little bit. And yeah, the bulk of, the bulk of everything else is going down, down gradient downstream. The Porter estate is up there, and that's definitely coming down, hitting the river this way. And, and again, you know, that third method of conveyance, you know, those, those photos do kind of show like, you know, just unfettered access from all the wastewater treatment areas at that time to the property. The property was, again, built by the owner, William Bannon, who created the Bleachery. There was one other thing I had to say, but I completely forgot at this point. I think that's it for now.
So, so we've, we've got a Phase 1 assessment that indicates to the extent of the testing that was done, there are no contaminants on the property. So the big question that I have is, what facts do we have that would lead a reasonable person, let alone an unreasonable person like myself, believe that there is a pollution, a contaminant problem on the, on the property? You know, th- those of us who are of a certain age, like, like Dave and Bill Casparra, and maybe a few others here...
I'm probably close, probably.
Would remember a program in the 1950s called Drag Net. And, and Jack Webb played Sergeant Joe Friday. And, you know, his iconic line was, "All, all I wanted the facts, man." So what factual evidence is there to demonstrate that there may be a problem on this property that may necessitate us from, not just the decision ultimately as far as, as this particular application goes, but as far as, as testing? What, what is there?
Well, I think that is the, the giant unknown. We don't know what happened back there, completely. We know what he got caught with, but what, what didn't we catch before? You know, on, on the 119 parcel, again, if we can find that photo that, that I have submitted, it shows like, like driveways coming from the clarifying areas like right by the house. And then behind the house, currently where the dirt driveway is, it kind of loops around from this point. We, we kind of walked it on one of our walks. Over in this area, according to my attorney, it looked like there were striation pits that were, you know, something was leaked there or dumped there. I think it's, it's not the fact that we do know, but it's, it's the unknown at this point.
May I speak, can I be heard?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm all done, thank you, guys.
Well, actually, to answer your question, because you're talking about those, yeah, so there was that landscaper who was there who ran a landscape business, and we looked at aerial photos and saw there was a roadway back there, which is, you can kind of still see it, but I don't, I think it was surveying too, actually. That was, a landscaper had a business back there.
Oh, yeah, it's a dirt road back there, yeah.
It was, there was agriculture, he had, he had a lot of animals, animals there, because we can see the sort of hay storage structures. That, that's, those roadways were associated with the landscaper.
No. The, the 1961 aerial photos I have
That would have been before him, so.
Will show again, the house, the house is gonna be roughly right here. There are paths that run clear across, like literally this long, coming down this way. And then right in the back over here were some, were, it looked like dump pits. It's hard to discern because you're looking at a photo from 1960.
We looked at, as a part of our thing, we looked at aerial photos from every decade. That, that we didn't see, so you might have photos we don't have, we can take a look at them.
Yeah, I have submitted it, so it, it should be up on the town website, and I might actually have it in my package here, I'll be more than happy to show you.
Those are things that we look at. We also, again, I, I looked at the actual data from, that they've collected. There were a lot of things over at, at the Bleachery. And if there was a significant release in the back, you would, you would, you would be, and it was making it all the way to that, to the residential parcel, you would be seeing it in the front where a lot of assessment has been done. And I've only seen localized petroleum conditions, chlorinated solvents, very low levels. And there are things there, there are, you actually did a good job pronouncing some of those, but it's probably better than me. But, but some of those things, they're there and they're present, and it's there at 24,000 micrograms per kilogram. But the standard is 10,000, or, or three orders of magnitude higher than that. You know, those are pH compounds and things you're gonna find in your fireplace. So I'm gonna exceed, if I took a sample out of that and sent it to the lab, I'd have high levels of, of certain constituents that would exceed DEP report concentrations. But, but those are, those are things that exist everywhere. The, again, there's, there's a big number, six oil, historic oil issue at Summit Castings. Certainly, they were even talking about background, some of these things have background, which are anthropogenic things from historic use. I, I've seen, I've only seen the black and white photos, because that's what's on file with DEP, but I've seen the photos of stuff, I've seen the test pits they dug for the, the the area in the back where they wanted to permit a landfill, we did look at all that. If you've got a photo from 1961 that shows something that extending on to that residential property, and that's, I, I made that point with Molly, is we, we looked at all that stuff, that's what we're looking for. We're actually, our job is to try to find those things, because we don't want to miss those things. And we looked pretty hard for them, and we just did not find anything other than the residential use, the landscaper. That fence has been there along the property line since at least the 50s, because there was a plan there. We're buffered by the town property, I don't know when the town bought that property, the
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
Conservation land, or who they bought it from, I don't know when they bought that. But that area is between this, this site and that, and that property, or where you're talking about.
Probably, probably like right, right around here.
What, the...
This, this would be the conservation area right around here.
Right, 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 that's, right.
Did you take note of the hazardous waste that's out like right here? From the factory, it looks like big stacks and hoods.
The prior consultant actually identified that on, on this property. And we went out and GPS located it, I actually could tell from the fence line and property lines, it was, it was off the site, that's actually the town property. I don't, I don't know if it's hazardous waste, it's solid waste for sure.
Yeah.
And there's a process, and so, you know, there's a process you go through for looking at stuff like that. First you evaluate it. It looked like, it, it looked like, I know they call it tanks and drums, but they were sort of like...
Like hoods, like a big exhaust hoods or...
More like, almost like I want to say heating system, and it's pretty old, there's a lot of riveted stuff there, so that stuff is...
Like, like kilns and stuff like that, and...
Yeah, so, so, but, I mean, that's offsite, that's, that's off the property. And, you know, to be honest, if you really want to find out what's going on at these offsite releases, you go to the source where the problem is, and that's where you evaluate. Because you can go, you know, 400 feet away and test and not find anything, that doesn't mean that there isn't something going on up there. You really want to focus it where the release condition is, not at offsite properties. That's, that's really sort of not the way that, that we would assess them.
May I speak, can I?
The one last thing is, you know, getting back to this report here, somehow there were aerial photos taken of that in 1976, I believe. They're probably part of some town record that, I didn't have the time to request those for, for that. But I think, I think the scariest part is, you know, there, there, I think there are four buildings against this back property line here. You know, documented hazard waste here, here, into the water, this is where Summit is and where they had their oil leak. Some bad stuff right along this line here, too.
Yeah, which is, we, we did look at that, we looked at the data, and we look at groundwater flow, and it's pretty clear that it's moving away. So, you know, that stuff is not gonna move its way upstream. The, the aeolian deposits of contaminants are a little, I, I'm not too, that wind's gonna blow materials over there. That, that's not something you...
Well, not, not materials, but VOCs.
Well, VO, VOCs, that's not gonna be an indoor air issue. I mean, that's not, you're not gonna, and you're, you're, that'd be highly unlikely that you'd have impact from...
No, and that's, this is where I defer to the experts, so...
You know, VOCs in indoor air, what you're worried about is impacts to groundwater, and VOCs in groundwater that can migrate from, from groundwater into vapor phase into a building. And those are things that we look at, and when you have a release, there, there are standards when we have chlorinated solvents, there are certain levels in groundwater that we know represent a potential to be present in indoor air, and then that triggers a process of evaluating that. But the, the VOCs I saw, I saw, you know, petroleum-related, which are less of a concern for indoor air. Usually it's chlorinated solvents you'd be concerned about. And those levels were below drinking water standards, the ones that I could find on the sites down in the south of us. So, I mean, they're there, there's something there, it was used, industrial process, but the levels are fairly low. They also tested soil, and they were fairly low in soil. They're present, but they were fairly low. Nothing that would make me say, oh geez, there'd be indoor air issue on this site, which is from that, from Summit Castings is, you know, directly upgrading of it.
Well, thank you for your answers, I appreciate that.
May I speak?
Now I will step back and we'll, we'll let the expert speak, thank you, Bud.
Yeah.
May I speak?
Carl, the pictures you're referring to, will you, you'll get us them?
Yeah, I think I already put them on.
No, just, I, I know, but there's voluminous materials in our folders already. You know what they are?
Yes.
Send them Diana, and we'll get them.
Absolutely.
I, I think...
May I speak?
Someone?
Someone's saying, "May I speak?" on the video feed. Yeah, may I speak, it's Drew Hoyt.
Before, Mr. Hoyt, before you start, I want to make a point. And I hope this isn't uncharacteristic of me, but perhaps I'm giving myself too much credit. You insinuated, or at least I read an insinuation in your August 23 letter, of favoritism on the part of this board. I've been on this board for 27 years. I can think of 17 individuals that I've served with, and I probably have forgotten several. Six building commissioners who've assisted us, four town planners who've worked with us. I don't know how many people have occupied the same position that Diana has, and none as well as she has done. And I think they will all attest that we have never shown favoritism towards anyone. Your comments, to my mind, are baseless, insulting, and defamatory. Now, as I mentioned earlier, if anybody has any factual evidence to demonstrate that there's a problem with this property, please bring it forward. But I don't want opinions, and I don't want suppositions, and I don't want speculation. I need facts. You can proceed.
Yeah, I'll give you the facts. I'm gonna give you facts.
And I feel the same way, sir. Just so you know, I feel the same way. And I would just add that if you feel there's a problem with what we've been doing, my advice to you is, go talk to the town manager about the conduct of the board.
I'm not here to talk about the conduct of the board, I'm just here to try to speak to the facts at the site.
Well, like you were sending letters, the letter... The letter was offensive.
Well, the letter's in the record, and I, I heard your answer to it. I, I hear what you said.
Do you have any information you could provide us that's any different than what you've said in writing?
I do. Well, I have some particular responses to the gentleman who just spoke. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch the name of the gentleman who gave the presentation on the environmental report. But you know, in my work, when I was working for the DEP, one of the things that I did was read reports and pay particular attention to the fudge words. And in this context, in this presentation, the phrase that jumped out to me was discussion of regional groundwater flow. Well, the regional direction of, you know, Route 95 is, is north and south. Doesn't mean it's going north and south at every location, as you know, anyone who's driven it. Groundwater, the groundwater flow direction that we care about is not the regional groundwater flow, we care about the local groundwater flow. The local groundwater flow is variable. In the closest data we have to the site, to the, to the development property, doesn't show it going southwest, it shows it going south. If you look at the groundwater data that was collected up at the Evelyn Porter site, the variability of groundwater flow at that site, there are locations where it's to the south, there are locations where it's to the southwest, there are locations where it's to the southeast. So knowing, you know, to, to hear someone say that the regional groundwater flow is to the southwest is true as it may be, it's of, it's of no relevance when what we care about is the local groundwater flow. And we do not know the local groundwater flow. Right? Just like I don't, knowing that 95 goes north and south does not tell me which direction it's going in any particular location along its path. So we don't know the local groundwater flow. We do know that it is somewhere between, you know, generally southerly. It doesn't, I don't think, I think it would be surprising to see someone were to say it was moving northerly. But generally southerly, I think, is a more fair characterization of what's happening locally. And when you look at the contamination that's documented at the northeastern corner of the, of the Bleachery parcel, as was the map that was just shown on the screen a short time ago, in my, the papers I most recently submitted, I had a, a printout of one of the environmental reports that showed additional contamination even further easterly of that northeasterly portion. And if you draw the line south from that area, knowing that plumes don't move like a laser, they, you know, they spread out, there is reason for concern. To know, and to say that we don't have, you know, the proof of it, or we don't, we, you know, well, that's exactly the point, we don't have the data, we will, you know, and it's not gonna show up during construction, you know, when you're doing construction, you're not simultaneously environmentally sampling. There is reason for concern, your peer reviewer has indicated the same thing. So, and if the, I'll make this additional point. If the, if the applicant and their consultant are as confident as they indicate they are that there's no issue, then they should not have an objection to providing the board with the additional measure of certainty by conducting a round of soil and groundwater sampling. If they are correct, then it will show up clean, and they will have put the issue to bed, rather than leaving it as something that we're all gonna wonder whether we're putting residents on top of environmental contaminants. I don't think the consultant who spoke would, would disagree when I say that groundwater flow varies locally, notwithstanding regional flow direction. We're not talking about, you know, it's not as if we're saying, or we need to say that groundwater's going north, it's, you know, we're talking about south. The, the area we're concerned about at the Bleachery site, where it extends east of the northeast portion, is pretty much north of the development site. That is adequate reason to be concerned. And when you look at the, the nature and the, just the massive amount and variety of what was documented for disposal at that site, I just don't understand why it would even be a question to conduct a round of sampling to put the issue to rest. You know, you, you have got those four structures that are proposed to be built along the northern line of the property. You do, you know, you, you put in a, a soil and groundwater sampling location, basically just north of those, each of those four buildings would be what I would suggest. And you test the soil, you test the groundwater. And if the consultant is correct that everything is down gradient, across gradient, then you know, they'll get to say, "I told you so." And, but the cost in time and dollars is... And, but the cost in time and dollars is well worth it to protect against a potential public health issue that if the things were built there and arose later, Molly mentioned that she's dealt with at D P sites where it was discovered after the fact. As an attorney, I'm dealing with a site right now where it arose after the fact. And, yeah, it's a nightmare when you have a homeowners association trying to now deal with a 21E issue, you know, paid for by homeowner dues, a quarter of which are low-income or moderate-income, you know, people. Now is the time to address the issue, and the pushback, the pushback from the applicant and the pushback from wherever it's coming from is really troubling. Why not just do the test? Just makes no sense to me that, that when you have this opportunity to put the issue to bed, you wouldn't put it to bed, but would instead rely on, you know, a lack of information to draw a conclusion that there's, you know, to draw an affirmative conclusion that the site is safe for development, when you have it well within your means to ask the applicant to just confirm with sampling. That's what the consult, that's what your peer reviewer has recommended, what common sense says to do. I don't, I can't see, I can't see a reason why the board would not ask the applicant to do that. And I will tell you, you know, people take offense, take offense if you may, but if I had, if I had an issue on the table where the issue was a lack of information about local groundwater flow near a well-documented contaminated site that wraps around to the north, and if I had that concern and someone came in and started telling me about regional groundwater flow, and when my concern is about local groundwater flow, I'm sorry, I'd show them the door. You're at 10%. The pushback and the notion that you're going to let this slide on a lack of information, because that's what there is, there is a lack of information. What other conclusion should a person draw if this project slides through on a lack of information and you stick 50 people next to a site where there's 100-year history of waste disposal?
So I'm very briefly going to respond, and then we're going to call it a night. This is an issue that I've been concerned with from the start, and I don't disagree with you from a practical perspective. I've had discussions, numerous discussions with Paige about this, with Judy, with Paige and Judy, and I keep telling myself not to say punching Judy. We spoke with Molly about it, Paige, Judy, and I did. I've talked with town council about it. I need to look at the border health regulations to get a sense as to what we can do as far as that. But I'm concerned about the fact that from a legal standpoint, we would be stepping into an issue where we'd be dealing with state regulations, which we have no jurisdiction and no authority over. And for that reason, I'm very hesitant, very reluctant, and opposed to doing any testing at this point in time. Now, perhaps as far as the border health regulations, it's a different issue. I need to study that. But anything beyond that, I think we're delving into state issues which we do not have any authority or jurisdiction over.
We have absolutely sought to deny the application.
I'm not finished. We can, if we deem it appropriate, impose appropriate conditions. Even there, we've got to be careful as to what we do. That would be the avenue that I would recommend to the board. Now, again, I'm one of only three people voting on it, but that would be the position that I would take. From a legal standpoint, I am concerned that we would be involved with issues over which we have no jurisdiction and no authority to involve ourselves with. I'm going to leave it at that for tonight. Yes?
Could I leave you with one quick thing?
Sure.
Just to back up what Carl said. Back in the 70s, I had a dog that I let out, and she went missing, and we could hear her howling over in the back. If you know where my property is, I can throw a baseball over to the Bleachery. That's how close to back my property is. The dog went, disappeared, and I could hear this yelping. And I went out back with my son, and we found these funny-looking concrete pits with like green slime. It looked like antifreeze. Lo and behold, my dog was just about dead trying to get out of the pit. And then, six months later, she died of liver cancer. So just to leave you with that thought, it was something weird back then.
I want to take up this issue again. We're going to be here in three weeks. We'll take up the issue then. A couple of administrative matters. Bill, I'd like to have a working session to discuss waivers. So if you could send Paige an email with some dates, and then she could coordinate it with, you know, her, I know Judy wants to be involved. I'd like either one of us to be involved. So just give Paige some dates that would be convenient for you, and we'll see what we can work out.
Weeks, or...
Anytime within the next, anytime during October, just to start delving into that.
Coordinate that with Paige?
Yeah, please. So our next meeting is October 20th. We'll talk about environmental issues as well, as, I mentioned this to the board earlier, I want us to think about what we have missed, what we think we need to discuss or find out more about. And in that regard, if you can send Paige an email in the next week or two, just to let her know some other things you want us to delve into, that would be, would be appropriate. So a motion to continue the hearing until October 20?
I move we continue the hearing until October 20.
Second.
All in favor? And a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All right, this I got to do by roll call. Kurt, are you there?
I am here, yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney?
Yes.
See you in three weeks.